You see them on TV. You see them.
I presume so.
Well, that is the plan. They'll make time to pass them over.
It seems the same, just nights and nights.
I went to see some.
There was a capitol that used to be years ago.
That would which may take place.
The other famous act that I think I like.
I'm going to say it works out. You don't break up the case.
And I brought him into Rand one day. And somebody said, "Do you know where you do that in?" And I said, "No." "Interesting." "Regular clothes." And I said, "No." "It's comfortable." And I said, "Okay." And that was a lot of. I'm not doing that tonight.
Okay, it's 6:30, and I'm going to call the January 8th work session of the permanent planning board to order. And we'll begin with a roll call. Present this evening are Mike Ahern, John Kelly Selectman's representative, John Randlet, Bill Hool, John Kootieberg, Altona Bob Dragon, Altona Rhonda Bishop, Altona Bert Sutcliffe. Absent this evening by prior announcement is a member, Dave Switzer. And I'm going to appoint Mr. Dragon to serve in Mr. Switzer's place. Item three on our agenda is the review and adoption of the minutes of our December 18th work session. You should all have a copy of it in your package or in front of you. If anyone might even be here. In the usual drill, we'll go through it page by page. If you notice any omissions or corrections, signify and you'll get care of. With this typeface, it's just rather a lot of material in each page. On to page 10. And finally, page 11. Hearing no corrections or additions, I'll ask for a motion on the minutes of December 18th.
Someone?
It's been moved by Mr. Hool that the minutes be accepted, seconded by Mr. Randlet. All those who favor accepting minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A little time ago, we talked about shortening the minutes.
This is the shortened version. Yeah. They seem to be creeping up in the volume of content. It more as a transcript, as I look at it now. And that's why I did make the comment. And I guess we'd have to ask, it looks like somebody's new doing it.
This was a new person. Our regular minute person, she went on vacation, so we had another person do the minutes. And he did it for us during the summer. And I did reiterate, don't make it a transcript, but it's hard. He wants to be complete. He wants to be thorough. Anyhow, she's back from vacation. She just took two weeks off, so she's back. So we'll have it back in the format that we had it before. It's just he was trying to do a thorough job, so.
And the other thing is, the sound system has improved. So there are fewer guesses than misses. So it's, all right, so.
Just one comment.
Yes.
Where these are ordinance public hearing items, I think that this detail is appropriate, frankly.
The transcript format.
Right. That was the other point, too. We had a lot of public, and you have to put what the public says, so.
Well, I think they did it. I was going to say, I thought they did a great job doing it.
Yeah, I love it very much.
You spend a lot of time. I mean, you know, it's a college student, and he's doing his best, but he's spent a lot of time on it.
Very good. All right, we'll move along to a public comment. Item four on our agenda. If any member of the public would like to comment something that's not on the agenda, we'd be delighted to hear from them. Okay? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you. There was a select person, Patrice Scott, wishing us a Happy New Year. Item five on the agenda, Miriam, we, correspondence is light as well. I might add that the gentleman is in the audience.
Okay. Okay. I gave everyone a copy of the letter that we received, so it's at your desk. And it was a letter of interest from Paul Wilson, who's here in the audience, that he is willing to serve on the permanent planning board. So this letter is going to the Board of Selectmen, and they'll look at it. At least I'll distribute it to them at their Monday meeting.
That's great. Yeah. We're always interested in qualified people who have the time and the interest to serve on our public boards. And we welcome Mr. Wilson's interest in the planning board. Sure. Would this be a good time for us to get an update here by the next meeting of all the terms and when they expire and so forth? We should bring that up to date, so we all know what we say.
Sure. That's absolutely great. I'm going to bring that up to the Board of Selectmen on Monday.
Okay.
I know off the top of my head, you want me to?
Yes. We discussed it earlier this week, so go right ahead.
Okay. Fred Gool's term actually expires. Rhonda, your term is coming up to expire. And Bill Hool. So whoever wants to serve, please let me know, you know, you three, please write me a letter letting me know that you want to continue. And I'll forward that on to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob, for the question. All right, we're going to get into the item number six, which is new business. And we're going to use the same format we did before. Now, Miriam, you mentioned a public hearing and possible decision of a planning board as to whether we. Are we in a public hearing format for each of these now?
Yeah, we're in a public hearing for, you know, the fence as we cover it. And then we'll open up a public hearing for Master Sign Plan, so just like we did last time.
The same format. Did we leave copies of the proposed ordinances? Because we didn't do that last time in the meeting.
Actually, I have them on the board down the speakers. Do you want to run down and get a word? Do you know on the board that, oh, that we put the building up? I can just bring that whole board up. Oh, my leg. I brought this one, I forgot about that one. But, you know, it's got my amendments and your amendments.
So the format will be, the board will take each one in order. We'll discuss them briefly. We'll open up to a public hearing. And then Miriam has suggested, and I was in the same vote, is that this might be a good point for the board to take a position on each of these relative to them going under the warrant, so. And I would suggest that that be an up or down vote on each one of them. If you choose to abstain, of course, that is your right, but I think the voters deserve to know how the board stands on each of these. And it's customary for us to read the warrant article at town meeting and note what the board's recommendations were.
Standard drawing required.
It's required as well, yeah. So it's not an option. All right, so we're going to begin with the fence ordinances. We'll take them in the order that they're here. And if you can dig it out of your package there, it's dated the 8th. And Miriam, would you give us the overview on each one of these, where we've reacted to public input, where the attorneys have suggested fine tuning, blah, blah, blah?
Right. And the first one, fence, I actually, you should have an amended copy since mail out. It says amended 1709. And that was also at your desk when you came here tonight. Because this was the last rendition with the.
I'll just take the copies.
Oh, but you can just put that in the back. Yeah. Fred suggested we just put it in the back, so if somebody.
So the amended copy is the one that's on the table tonight, rather than the one that was in your package.
Right. And it's just for the fence. So there was just some minor wording changes that he thought things would flow a little bit better. And then also, the attorney, when we had a statement about they should have the good side of the fence facing the abutting property, he didn't want to do that because the zoning code's always supposed to be about public purpose, and he didn't see a public purpose with that. That's really more of a civil issue. The other change, remember, just to review this, what we're talking about is that if you have a fence less than four feet in height, don't need a land use permit, just install it. If your fence is going to be four feet or taller, then you need to come in and get a land use permit and show us where you want to locate it. If it's located within the front yard, it's a front yard fence, then you can't exceed four feet unless you get a special exception, because we want to avoid having that barricade look where the fence would just sort of look like a barricade. But otherwise, the fences are permitted within your side and rear yard setback. And that was a big change, because up to this point, if you were in the rear, you had to set it back 15 feet. If you're on the side, you had to set it back 15 feet. And if you're in the front, you had to set it back 30. All fences over four feet high shall receive the land use permit, which is what I pointed out before. And then, except for, okay, number D, except for a common fence, as this is defined by RSA 474, all fences shall be located at least one foot from the property line. So common fence is the one that's on the property line, and RSA explains all the rules to that. Otherwise, if the property owner doesn't agree to put it on the property line, you just set it back one foot onto your property, and that should be enough for maintenance requirements. And then any fence over six feet high shall require a special exception. That's to, there was a concern about what's called a spiked fence, that somebody would set up a fence that, let's say, had borrowed wire on it or something, just to annoy the abutting property owner. We said, as long as it's under six feet high, we don't need to worry about it. But if it's over six feet high, then go through special exception, and then we would look at that. Right now, we're looking at all fences that want to go on the property line or want to go within that 15 feet. And then we also had a suggestion about fences that are being used for agricultural purposes are exempt in our ordinance. And then a point was brought up about, what about if it was for safety purpose governed by the state statutes or department's rules? So we included that in that exemption, because that was brought up by one of the citizens last time. So I included that. And so we've got our fence amendments.
Thank you, Miriam. I'm going to be opening the public hearing on the proposed fence ordinance at 6:44. Public hearing is open. Any member of the public wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, please signify and identify yourself. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition of the fence ordinance. Okay, I'm going to be closing the public hearing on the fence ordinance and return it to the board at 6:45 PM. Okay. Then what is in order is a motion for the board to vote in support or in opposition of this article for the warrant. And someone can frame a motion for that, and then we'll vote on it.
I'll move that we go forward with the adoption through town meeting of this proposed fence ordinance.
Second. The motion has been made. You're not voting.
I'm not.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Hool, seconded by John Kootieberg. All those in favor of the proposed fence ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The vote was unanimous. Next on our public hearing agenda will be the master sign plan. You all have a master sign plan summary with no changes in your package, but I'm going to let Miriam give us the overview again. Miriam, please.
Right, again, this is just to address the freestanding signs in the HC zone, ICD zone, and the agricultural zone, that we currently only allow one sign, 100 square feet. And we've gotten more and more development that's actually been a shopping center. And so this one sign that's 100 square feet doesn't work for a shopping center. It's fine for just a single business. So we're looking at having an option to, in addition to that, if the shopping center couldn't be accommodated with our existing ordinance, that they would have an option to do a master sign plan. And that would be something that would be submitted, reviewed, and approved by the planning board. It would be a site plan review process. They could do it as part of their regular site plan review, so it would be just another sheet, similar to how they do a lighting plan. Or if they've already gone through the site plan review process, they could come back before planning board and submit that sheet. We were talking about, the attorney wanted us to put a maximum square footage, and then a discussion on how we should characterize that or come up with a formula. And when I was talking to the other staff, we really thought it would be better if we just specified what we need in our master sign plan. So that's the language that we added to this. We just said, you know, to provide us with the dimension and the layout and the proposed placement and the architectural rendering, because it's not so much a matter of square footage, it's where it's located, how far away from the road, what's the speed of the road, where it's going to be situated. And also with the master sign plan, why I'm trying to encourage this, is that we want a uniformity of it, so that we have a shopping center, and maybe some shopping centers could accommodate it with one directory sign, but some, when it has a long footage, maybe they'll need two or three signs. But as long as they have a conformity to it, they have a similar design, that's what we're looking for. What we've got right now at Commerce Park, and you have each individual owner coming in, and they're each putting their own individual sign, and we have some that are banners and some that are with the, you know, the arrow that flashes, and we have individual, you know, the portable sign, and it's sort of becoming hodgepodgey, and that's what we don't want. We want to have, that's why I call it the master sign plan, a uniformity. And I don't think there's going to be a magic number that I could come up with, because there you have very unique topography, you have a burn, and you come from Romney, you have a whole different feel of it than when you come from the Plymouth side. So I want it to be flexible. That's the whole point, flexible, but yet makes sense and yet meets our purpose of what our sign ordinance is, which is clearly stated in our ordinance.
Thank you, Miriam. Same format as before, I'm going to open the public hearing on the proposed master sign ordinance. I'll open the public hearing at 7:49. Okay, those, anyone in the public who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance, you could identify yourself. Anyone in opposition to the proposed sign ordinance? Okay, I'm going to be closing the public hearing on the master sign ordinance at 6:50 PM. Thank you. Back to the board for discussion on the fence ordinance.
Again, I'll move that this board recommend for adoption by town meeting this revised master sign amendment.
Motion made by Mr. Hool. The board supports this ordinance at town meeting and seconded by?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dragon. Discussion on the motion, none? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, again, seven in favor. Moving right along on our busy hearing agenda, we've got, it appears to be the accessory buildings. Is that correct?
Tavern.
Tavern amendment. Tavern amendment.
One of the citizens last time brought up the, with the state statute, the RSA, if annual food sales are above 50,000, I mean, it used to be 75,000, that they're exempt from that 50% requirement. Because if you have that much food sales, you, you know, you are a restaurant, a full-service restaurant. So the state wasn't as concerned, and we thought, we want to be sort of consistent with the RSA. So since the original number was 75,000, and, you know, we felt that was a good number, this is talking to people that have food sales and taverns in the downtown, we decided to reflect that in this amendment. So that was to address that concern, and I think we'll still have a good ordinance, because what we're looking for is not penalizing a full-service restaurant. We're just trying not to have the standalone taverns. And then also, it was brought up before about a pool hall might be a way to get around this ordinance, so I've also added pool hall to this, too, that we're calling it bar, tavern, nightclub, and pool hall.
And even though it's not stated, it is stated in your overview that this is an ordinance that will prohibit taverns.
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to be opening the public hearing on the tavern ordinance at 6:52 PM. Any member of the public wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance, please signify, and I'll recognize you. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance? Okay, I'm going to be closing the public hearing at 6:53. And we'll turn it to the board for discussion. John?
Mr. Chairman, could you enlighten me a little bit on what you just said about the Main Street? Is that the only place that this is going to be?
No, 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 no.
Did that change?
No. I just, when we came up with this $75,000.
Right.
That was what was recommended from the restaurant owner, a local restaurant owner. But no, we're not going to allow standalone taverns throughout the town of Plymouth. So we're not treating downtown different than Tenny Mountain. They're both, everything's treated the same. It was just coming up with that figure of the 75,000.
Okay. John, further discussion?
Did the email, when you sent this to us, did it say $150,000?
No, originally it said $50,000, because that was from today's RSA. But when I was talking to the restaurant owner, he said, "Well, that was just recently changed to 50,000." He thought 75,000's actually a better number, because we didn't want, we wanted to make sure that it was a full-service restaurant. And so he said, even though the RSA changed it, they brought it down to 50,000, he said he was fine with just keeping it 75,000. So it's just differentiating it from someone that just is selling food a little bit, but not seriously selling food.
Yes, John, back to you.
What was the discussion last week, about 500,000?
No, 50, it was 50. And this is addressing that. The same citizen that brought that up, I talked to him on the phone. So.
So anything over 50,000, the regulation of 50/50 does not apply?
Right, but we're going to change it to 75,000. Right, anything over 75,000.
Now, is that according to the state?
It's according to how the state law was a couple of years ago. But now the state law actually rides on to 50,000. But that same citizen that brought it up said he's comfortable with 75,000.
But this is, this should be for all restaurants, not just one particular restaurant?
Correct. What we're trying to do is come up with a definition of what is a full-service restaurant. There's some people that are getting around this tavern amendment. There's actually a restaurant in Laconia where they give you menus, and it gives you phone numbers, and you just, like, if you want pizza, you order pizza, and they deliver it to you at that restaurant. So they're really not serving you food. It has no kitchen, okay? So we don't want people to, you know, fool around and move home away. We want this to be a full-service restaurant, so that's why we came up with that figure.
Now, is this a consensus to all, of all the restaurant owners, or is this a consensus of one?
This was a suggestion of one restaurant owner that was here last time.
Did you ask any of the other restaurant owners?
No, but it seems like a reasonable number. I mean, let me put it this way, it was in the RSA, 75,000. They recently brought the number down. If you all are comfortable with us bringing the number down, that's okay. But one of the Board of Selectmen wasn't comfortable with us bringing the number down to 50,000. He wanted it what the number used to be, 75,000. Because he said that people have been taking advantage of a full-service restaurant, as it said, by having people bring food in.
Yeah, refreshing the board's memory on this whole process, which has been going on about a year, we were concerned that the state was going to liberalize the law such that we would have an outbreak of beer halls and taverns. And we formed a committee to study that, to tighten up the, a local ordinance, to create a local ordinance that would protect the town. And what I'm hearing is that we picked a lower number than perhaps gives us, than it should be. The higher number gives us more protection at 75. But if the board felt that we should go and look at it a little harder, I would entertain that. Yeah.
I mean, really, originally, we're talking about if more than 50% of the gross receipts are in food, don't worry about it. But it was brought up at the last meeting, well, there's an exemption, the state gives an exemption. And the reason why, he said, is that sometimes they're catering something, and it throws their numbers off. They actually wind up doing more alcohol sales than food sales. But they truly are a full-service restaurant.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, now, Rhonda, you would like to speak?
Yeah, I do. I just have a question on how this will be affected, because, for instance, the restaurant here locally has a tavern bar underneath their business, but they consider it as one whole business. They mainly do food upstairs, and downstairs is pretty much strictly that. So I'm wondering if, say, if a restaurant comes into town, like this Chinese restaurant out in Tenny Mountain, and then they decide, like, being partnership with some tavern people and have a place in the back, that it's really two businesses, but one, how, or is that exempt or special exception, or how else can it be handled?
Are you talking about, Rhonda, clarifying, you're talking about a second operation inside a building? I would suspect it would have to have a separate license, for one thing, but I'm not sure.
Right. It's just, the restaurant in downtown, I mean, that was approved by the state, and we're having the same ordinance. state and we're having the same ordinance right now that the state has. So in that scenario you're talking about, they go through the state, if the state approves it, fine. So we're not changing anything. The only thing we were concerned about, the state was looking at not having that 50 percent in food sale requirement. And so allowing someone to sell more alcohol than food, which they haven't done in quite a number of years, I don't know, maybe 40 years or something. So if the state changes it, then we have no protection against that. But otherwise, that scenario you're talking about right now, it's going to be the same that it's always been their rule.
I just meant as far as the town, because obviously we're trying to be different, we're trying to be different than what the state is allowing, so I didn't know how.
No, no, this is only different if the state changes.
If the state becomes more liberal, we'll have more stringent rules. That was the philosophy that we were pursuing.
Right, because as it stands today, the state does not allow a tavern because more than 50 percent of its food sales is in alcohol. So the state doesn't allow it today.
Correct, you had a question?
Yeah, I think I would argue that if anything, that number should be higher than 75,000. That's very, I mean, it's $1,500 a week in food is, I can't imagine that there's anything that remotely resembles a restaurant that doesn't meet that threshold. We sold more ice cream in two and a half months on Tenny Mountain Highway than 75,000 annually. That's a very low threshold.
Do we have time for you to make a reasonable survey of existing Plymouth restaurants, if they disclose that to you, to see if the number is right or wrong? Should it be higher? I would hate to go to all this effort to gain this protection and find out that we didn't set the bar on that.
Right, well, that's why we didn't want to set it at what the current RSA was, the current RSA is 50,000, which is lower. And as I said, one of the members of the board is selecting, that's, you know, familiar with the restaurant business, that that's way too low, so let's set it to 75, which relates to how the RSA was, you know, a couple of years ago.
John?
That was basically what my question was aimed at, is I would think that it should be higher. And I also don't believe that one restaurant in the town that has an ungodly amount of restaurants and pizza houses and everything would be a representative of all the restaurant owners. One restaurant out of 15 or 20, to me, is not really, I think there should be a wider survey as far as what it is. And I agree that $75,000 in food is fiddling as far as most people are concerned, especially the prices we have to pay for meals nowadays. So I would like to have a little bit more discussion, a little bit more of an analysis on this and what has been done.
If we gave you a short view, is could you do a reasonable survey of the major five restaurants in Plymouth and see if they'll talk to you? Then we can test the sanity of that number, whether it's right or wrong.
Sure.
Does that make you feel better, John?
Yeah.
Just Bill.
How did council comment on this relative to the state position?
Did you run this by town council, is the question?
Oh, okay, sorry, no, I didn't.
Where there's a conflict between our number and the state number, that could set potentially the municipality up the suit.
Okay, okay. All right, so let me run it by town council even prior to doing the survey because if he says no, you should be consistent with the RSA, then.
Okay. Then based on that, I'm going to table further discussion on the tavern ordinance and we'll pick it up when Maryam has done those two things. So the discussion is tabled, we pulled that off the agenda and we'll address it at future meeting. Yes, Bill?
Mr. Chairman, in recognition of some critical timelines here, I would recommend that we table this to a date certain so that we can schedule another public hearing on it. And I would suggest that to be as early as the 15th.
Which would be next week.
Next week.
Yeah, that's what I asked her, if she could get her ducks lined up by next meeting, next week, that, and we can still meet the notice requirements and have our hearings.
I'm not sure about the notice requirement, because I'll be able to put it in the paper, get in there, no, all right, maybe if I put it in the citizen instead, okay, let me go make sure we can do that.
There's a way to handle this. As opposed to closing our public hearing, we can reopen our public hearing.
Okay.
Tonight, we can then recess the hearing to a date certain, 15th, giving us a week to clarify.
Okay.
So then we don't need a new start time?
You don't need a new advertisement, you don't need a new start time.
Okay. We're all comfortable with that? Okay, then I'm going to reopen the public hearing on the tavern amendment. And I'll again ask the public if anybody would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Yes?
Brian Murphy, just concerning that dollar figure, unless specifically stated in the RSA, the towns have the right to make more stringent laws than the state. As we saw with the Windmore ordinance.
And when council tells us that, it'll even have more clarity than you, Brian.
Well, no. As opposed to what Mr. Central said about setting it arbitrarily, I figured, we can take it up to a further level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further comment? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? I'm going to recess this public hearing until our next regular scheduled meeting, which is January 15th. We'll reopen the public hearing at that time on the tavern ordinance, we are in recess on that. Okay. We're going to move along now, we're going to talk about accessory apartments, and this one has had our town council's fine touch. Maryam, give us the overview, please.
Okay. So again, we've looked at this before, this is, you know, what people call the mother-in-law suite, that a family member wants to come and live, but you still want, you know, they want their own kitchen. So our definition of a dwelling unit would be a kitchen, a bedroom, and a bathroom, that makes it a dwelling unit. So right now, our ordinance only accommodates that by something they call a duplex. But there are the situations where you just want a family member to have their own unit and it's not really a duplex, it looks exactly like a single-family home and it operates like a single-family home. And after that situation, when the family member is no longer living in this situation, it would just revert back to the single-family home. We spent a lot of time with the attorney on this one and we finally got the wording down that he's very comfortable with. And the first two, we kept just the way we had it, that the accessory unit shall not be distinguishable as such from the outside, so it will still appear as a single-family home and that changed the character of the neighborhood. Two, there shall be only one mailbox, so again, it's another way for it to look like a single-family home. Three, this is what I changed with the attorney, there shall be off-street parking available to accommodate the residence of the single-family residence and the accessory family dwelling, which shall consist of at least three spaces unless the zoning per, I'm sorry, yeah, zoning per adjustment finds a fewer number to be adequate in a particular circumstance. So we did want it specified in the number of parking spaces instead of saying available to accommodate. Driveway, having just one driveway, that was the same. Number six, okay, this is, this is one that we really wanted to work on and make sure we were clear on this. The unit shall not be converted for non-family rental and occupancy shall cease whenever not needed for related family members of the owners of the primary dwelling. Any special exception shall specify the number of related family members permitted to occupy the accessory unit and any increase in the number shall require further special exception. So what this is talking about is that if you say, can I have a mother-in-law suite? And then, for a couple of years, it is the mother-in-law living there, but then later on, it's the father-in-law, it doesn't matter, I mean, one is one, okay, so they don't have to go back for a special exception. However, this is saying that if you have the mother-in-law there and then she's no longer living there, you can't rent it out because that's not the purpose of this. Also, so we're trying to tighten that up, that you said you wanted it for a family member, it should stay for a family member.
Thank you, Maryam. I'm going to open the public hearing on the so-called mother-in-law apartment, the accessory family dwelling ordinance at 17:00 PM. Anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance, please signify and I'll recognize you. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on the accessory family dwelling ordinance at 17:00 PM. Bring it back to the board for discussion and vote. Mr. Cooper, here?
Question for the town planner, just because it seems contradictory a little bit. In the definition, in the second line of the dwelling accessory family, it says that it could be a separate accessory structure on the same lot as the main dwelling. But then, when you get into G1, it says the accessory unit shall not be distinguishable as such from the outside of the house, in other words, the house shall look like a single-family house. So could the accessory unit look nothing at all like the house? Or does it have to look like the house?
There's a lot of conflict there.
I didn't think about that. Where I lived, it was very common to have what we called the gatehouse, so you had the single-family house and then you had something called the gatehouse. Is anyone familiar with this or no?
We didn't live in that neighborhood.
Okay, my nice drive through. So it still felt within the single fam, you know what I'm saying, it had the single-family character to it. It didn't look like a duplex, it didn't look like a townhouse, it didn't look, so I guess that's what I'm getting at. I don't know if it's really going to happen, that the situations where I've had it where the person has lived separate, it's been that they had a detached garage and then the mother-in-law lived in the detached garage. So my point is that when you drive by there, it's not going to be obvious that there's two dwellings. It will look like there's a detached garage, whether there's an apartment above it or not, it's not changing the character. So, yeah, I do understand your point, but if you want to tweak it, that's fine, but that's what I'm getting at, that you drive by and everything looks like, it still feels like the character of the neighborhood.
John's question might have been, new construction, could somebody under the umbrella of this committee put up a cottage on the property that didn't exist?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, it just has to be in the right scale. So that would be something, remember, we're only approving this by special exception, so they have to show us the plan. And as long as it's at the same scale of, you know, the house and then you have the garage, so it's always at a smaller scale, I mean, that principal structure fits in perfectly. If the new one got bigger than that, I mean, that's why you would review it as special exception, to look at and see if it's going to change the character.
So they would be coming before this board in?
No, no, special exception is, yeah, special exception is ZVA, but it will be case by case and see what the character of the neighborhood is. If the neighborhood has a lot of the house and then, you know, what we used to call the gatehouse or the coach house, or garages, and that's just the character.
Service quarters, cabana. John?
I'd like to dwell in this a little bit more too because it's completely contradictory to it. One says, and even if you had a separate building as a gatehouse or a guesthouse, whatever you might want to call it, that is completely different than the single-family home. A guesthouse is different than a shed, it's different than a garage, it has all of the operating units that a main house would have, the old, you know, eating and sleeping and so forth and facilities to it. But what they're saying in here says that the accessory unit shall not be distinguishable as such from the outside of the house, in other words, the house shall look like a single-family house, not houses, house, from the outside and not like two or more dwelling buildings. I don't know how much planning you can get by saying, I'm going to add a separate unit, there's a gatehouse or whatever you might want to call it. So are you saying that or are you saying it's all right to build a couple of houses on the lot? And those two houses could be exactly alike, the other one could be smaller and stuff like that. And, or you could build a garage with a apartment above it, there's so many, and believe you me, if there's any way of getting around any of this, the people in the town of Plymouth will find it. So I would be very specific about it.
Further discussion? Bill?
Just a comment, pursuant to your suggestion of a quote gatehouse, there's an example of such a structure in this town on a property on Highland Street that has been particularly problematical over the period of time that I've been on this planning board. And there are three separate structures on that property that were appended to another property. One of them was a little guesthouse or painter's house that got connected to a sore line because sore was available in the area and transitioned to actually a rental unit. And it's an unconforming use on that property against today's ordinance, it wasn't at the time that it was constructed, apparently, from what I can discern from the records that we examined over the time when it was in play. But I think the point that Jalon makes, that this is a single-family house with an appended structure that uses a common disposal system if it's not on sore, and that would be very difficult with the case that you're citing because you'd have to build out a new septic system or a new connection to an existing septic system, which I dealt with past muster with DES. So I think it needs to be codified as you have it in section G and reword your introductory paragraph to eliminate separate structures as qualifying under this provision.
I'm hearing the board is nervous on the opening that we're giving here for people who can exploit loopholes. I think it needs to be tightened up and the question I will put to my learned colleague, is this another case where we could recess the public hearing and reopen it on a date certain and allow our time to?
Yes.
And we don't have to go through this notice thing?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm going to take an eyeball poll of the board and I think that's what we will intend to do here. So I am going to, yes, John?
Might it be helpful for the planner if we sort of suggested whether we felt more in favor of scratching out the clause in the opening paragraph versus changing G?
We just did that. That was the clear message that Bill made.
Okay, it was the clear message from the board, okay.
And he's doing that. So with that said, I'm going to recess the public hearing to a date certain, January 15th, and we are in recess on that public hearing. Thank you. Moving right along. Well, two out of four isn't bad. Okay. Maryam, we're looking now at the rezoning from Village Commercial to Highway Commercial on North Main Street from Merrill Hallway to Baker River. Would you give us the overview, please?
Right, okay, well, I need to think, Brian Murphy, great graphic this time, so it's a lot easier to see. Here's the traffic circle, okay, you must have the bridge coming over here. And this, what's in orange is proposed Village, okay, our existing Village Commercial is in the blue. And then, the orange, this would continue to be Village Commercial. And then this is Merrill Street right here. And then we.
Get your other legs spread out, you're collapsing. Brian, could you give her a hand? Off the clock, sorry. Right to the rest of you.
Yay! All right, so blue contains our existing Village Commercial, orange, this would still stay Village Commercial. Here we have Merrill Street, you know, here's the, for the.
Here we have Merrill Street, you know, here's the furniture store right here, Merrill Street, and then there's what used to be the glass place, right? And the pizza place right here, and, I'm sorry, right here. And then this is where we were looking at rezoning. So from what's currently Village Commercial, change it to Highway Commercial because you can see the lots are much larger here and they could accommodate parking, they could accommodate setbacks, just definitely see a change of character. This is last meeting, we saw about those historic homes, and I hope historic homes are right here just north of Merrill Street. So you see they have that significant setback. So the uses would be very similar to what's permitted in Village Commercial. We're not talking about changing that. All we're talking about is giving us the added facility, which allows us to have setbacks and requires parking and actually leaves us with better growth, smart growth, instead of having everything congested. Everything congested in your urban core is standard and that makes sense, but I don't see any reason to extend it this far north, but north of Merrill and we have bigger lots.
And the public benefit statement that the attorney said was weak or lacking, the public benefit of doing this is rezoning. What's the benefit to the public?
The benefit to the public is just that this would give us better development. And it also coincides with what the existing development is, so it's a better match. You want to have your zoning reflect what your current uses, so it just makes a lot of sense because that's what is there.
One of the benefits to the public is exemplified in the commercial service station that's just at the little break, just beyond the three historical homes. That property that has the service station is built right on a curb line for all intensive purposes as far as its servicing facilities. The building itself is off the curb line by maybe 25 feet. But just the commerce that's conducted there, right on the edge of sidewalk, has been problematical as far as conflicts with highway traffic as well as pedestrian traffic. And also problematical as far as the parking of cars which overhang the sidewalk. And with this adoption, it would preclude future conflicts such as that has...
That operation, of course, would be grandfathered because it's...
That operation will be grandfathered, but it would prevent any further set conflicts from arising. I think that's a public benefit.
Because, you know, that's a good example. Because, see, that property has 1.57 acres, so there's no reason why they would put it right on the property line, but that's what they did. And the Highway Commercial would be reported to be setback 30 feet, which makes sense with all the rest of the...
So if you could turn the clock back, that would have been taken care of. Okay. I wanted to make sure we fulfilled the attorney's requirement that we had a clear public benefit statement, and I think I'm comfortable with what I've heard. Further discussion? Oh, we've got to open the public hearing. All right. We're talking about a rezoning amendment, and I'm going to open the public hearing on the proposed rezoning to Highway Commercial in the area currently. Village Commercial was delineated by the map and spoken very aptly to by the town planner. The public hearing is open at 7:22 P. M. And I'm looking for anybody who is in support of this ordinance. If I'd be... Yes, sir?
Frank Miller. I'll stand in support of this ordinance and change of the zone. It does and it will support the existing character of the homes and the buildings that are already on site and I believe would facilitate the proper utilization of the rest of the area. And I think it should pass.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else who would like to speak in support of this ordinance? Would anybody like to speak in opposition of the proposed zoning change? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on the zoning change proposal at 7:23 P. M. and bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion. Yes, John?
Number one, the discussion that was before the public meeting, should that be taken from the records because actually by post-Call, it should be the public meeting?
Well, I looked at our bylaws and we were okay at doing that. It was clarifying questions.
Because I had a question that I wanted to clarify too, and it wasn't allowed. But anyway, Marion, could you give us the boundaries or the borders of that, of all of that? Trace it up the left-hand side and down through the right-hand side? In other words, the statute of Merrill Street on the left-hand side, is that Weak Street?
Yeah, this is Weak Street. And this is an existing boundary. Right now it's on the manufacturer, I mean, multifamily zone. So it's multifamily zone right in...
That goes up Weak Street and...
And then it goes to...
Toby.
Toby, okay, nice. Okay, Toby Road. And again, there's, this is multifamily district. And this is Village Commercial.
And then where does it go from there?
And then it goes up to... This is property that's owned by...
Ray.
Alex Ray.
Alex Ray.
Alex Ray's property. And Alex Ray's property over here, the Common Man, that's already the zone of Highway Commercial. So this would have his property on this side, be zoned the same that it is on the other side of the river.
So it goes up to Tenny Mountain? Where it goes up to Tenny Mountain or...
Right, yeah. Tenny Mountain, well, Tenny Mountain is agricultural zone, but the Common Man...
Continue up the left-hand side, would you please?
Okay, I'm sorry, the left-hand side.
Goes up to the river?
It goes up to the river, then this is the Baker River here.
All right, and then it circles around?
And then Baker River.
Does that take in, does that take in five points of the old mains to you, or you might want to call it, where the water deferral is?
I'm told yes.
I'm going to do this, Mary.
Sure, come on up, come on up.
She's not familiar with all the roads.
And then, and then that...
And so then, again, this is following the Pennant Juwassit, the Pennant Juwassit and the Baker.
Essentially, at this point, it would merge with the existing Highway Commercial from there on out.
All right, thank you.
And this northern boundary here is on the northern side of P S U. So it goes back.
Yeah, and that's where that multifamily zone is, the P S U property.
Further discussion? Yes, Mike?
I guess I'm not either for it or against. I mean, I kind of like the idea of having extra room for shops that you can walk and bring people to Plymouth, especially with the nice inn that's just on the other side of the river that can almost walk. We've been walking since, rather than getting in the car, it would be right into a shopping area. It'd be a nice quaint little area. I know North Conway is not something that's desirable for this area, but there are a nice lot of little shops and the area seems to stop and then go back to shops that are side by side. Just wanted to point that out.
Yes, John?
The only thing I could say about that is that North Conway is fairly flat and this is a pretty steep impoundment, so you'd have to do a lot of work for you to make your shops up in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Marion?
If I could just add a comment, I did look at that, I mean, I don't want to do anything that's going to harm the downtown, but when you shop downtown or you walk downtown, typically sore, or at least I do, I sort of stop by where the traffic circle is. You know, you go a little bit beyond, maybe go to the Baker Place, but there's a certain distance that you're comfortable walking within and then it becomes too far. What I'd like to see is have Village Commercial widen a little bit and expand into Green Street. And that is known Village Commercial as far as I know. So I'd like to see it go fatter instead of just linear because there's something about you just keep walking and walking and it's just too far to walk. See what I'm saying? Versus making it fatter. So I'd like to see Green Street develop more as Village Commercial, which is already zoned that way, and it's more logical than keep going up this way when you have the lots. And if it went perfectly like the way you're imagining, sure, I understand, like, have another Village Commercial kind of big old building here, but we're not getting that. We're getting a lot here that's one and a half acres and yet they're building it right on the property line. Or people are doing it very spotty. They'll take a lot here and then build it to the maximum. What is our maximum capacity? So we're seeing cases where people are taking advantage and that's what brought it to my attention.
Mike, do you have another question?
What do the property owners, I mean, I like the historic building, I hope that will always stay historic and they're right on the edge where we're making the change. But what are the other property owners thinking?
Well, I've...
Have they contacted your office?
No, I've advertised it, posted it...
Yeah, we have no obligation to specifically notify each of the, we ran this by council, but we did notice it. And apparently you didn't get a lot of feedback.
And posted it, you know, we're only required to post it at two places. We posted it at six or seven different locations all around town, so it's been noticed.
So we're drifting a little bit into the master planning mode here rather than addressing ourselves to this one specific rezoning proposal, so we've got to be careful that we don't start replanning the whole town, although we don't have enough time. John, you have one more question?
No, I have nothing more.
Okay. Then I'll look for a motion on the board's feeling on the rezoning ordinance.
I made the motion that the rezoning ordinance be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Kelly. The board approved the zoning ordinance as proposed, seconded by Mr. Randler. I'll look for a vote. All those in favor of this proposed rezoning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe the vote's unanimous, and it is. Okay. We have one more public hearing on our agenda, and it's our building code enforcement ordinance. It's titled administrative and enforcement. It's the, it's in front of you, about eight pages, and we've talked about this. And are we going to, are you or Brian going to talk about this?
We are going to switch seats and rest in the afternoon. This is the second one.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. Mary Murphy? Thank you.
We've already been through it. I supplied you with your last mail-out with some of the changes that were proposed by council. It didn't substantially change anything. Basically, it struck out excess verbiage and referred back to RSAs because since that's where it all comes from to begin with, it's better just to keep it in one state. So if there's any changes on that, it's automatically reflected in our ordinance. That would be section 1101.3, which talks about penalties. Another thing that he had brought to my attention was that he didn't, one of the tractors right now is paving over a previously unpaved surface. And he wanted me to make it clear that if you were repaving a paved surface, that that was a, I guess the only wrong way to say it, is a non-permittable thing. In other words, it doesn't require a building permit to do, because it's already, obviously you've already had that payment at that point. And, oh, enforcement in 110211. And just, once again, it's just a change of verbiage and striking out some of them. And those are all highlighted and struck under color. So essentially, nothing has changed except for a little bit of the...
And it's in that gray tone.
Correct. The bullet gray, the additions and the structures are the situation.
Thank you, Brian. I'm going to open the public hearing on the proposed administrative and administration enforcement, so-called building inspector. We don't have a really good name for this ordinance, but it's the adoption of a schedule of fees and penalties for violations of building code. I'll open the public hearing at 7:33. And I will look for anybody who would like to speak in support of the building code, please identify themselves.
I'm Frank Miller, and I speak in favor of this building code, but I would like to also maybe add a suggestion to the process. And one of the concerns of the building inspector term and the office of the building inspector is the applicant's interface with the building inspector on site when there is a conflict that is not of nature of the code itself. And so I would like to offer something we could put in as part of the 1102.1 under the appointment, that the professional performance of the building inspector is governed by the office of the select board because they're the ones who appoint that position. And should there be a conflict of an applicant with a personality issue as far as the performance of the building inspector versus their conflict of code in application to their permit? If you're building a new building, obviously, it's going to be straightforward, you're going to be, bill will be 100% to the existing today's code. But we have a lot of buildings that are already built, and so there may be issues of how you address a certain code application. Obviously, leaves the personal opinions of the building owner and then the professionals, that's the electricians, the plumbers, the structures, and how this would be applied. I think what I'm trying to say is the concern of whether we get a building inspector down the road that is of a type of personality that wants to say, "Okay, you have to do it this way," and that's, there's no discussion. And/or they have a personality issue and not, it's not of the code, the building code, because that would be something that would be addressed at the zoning board under appeals of the building code technical issues. But something that addresses the personality issue or performance professionalism of the building inspector themselves. And I don't know quite how to word it, but the other option for this would be to think about the appointment of a building inspector for a term of three years with renewal of a three-year. And obviously, I don't know the legal ramifications about the existing building inspector as an employee that's full-time and how that works out. But there needs to be some ability for the board of selectmen and through any appeals process to the board of selectmen about professional performance level of a building inspector that may be, well, less than perfect in their professional connection with the applicants.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody else who would like to speak in support of this ordinance?
I just do point of clarification.
Excuse me, Marion?
If I could make a point of clarification, addressing?
Yes, if you can add to this hearing, that'd be great. Go ahead.
Okay. But addressing your comment, it is set up, when you look at the Board of Adjustment, it says 1204.1. The Board of Adjustment may hear and decide a case where it is alleged there is an error to any order, requirement, decision, or determination made by any official in the enforcement of the ordinance. So that covers that kind of, if anyone is aggrieved of a decision that was made by the quote compliance officer or any staff, they go to the ZBA. It's very common. So if someone's aggrieved by a decision of the town planner, they commit to his own Board of Adjustment. It doesn't have to be specifically related to the building code. It's broader. If you look at 1204.1, and in terms of the term, I mean, it follows the same procedure as any employee. If people are not happy with... If people are not happy with the...
Maryam, you're referencing... We don't have that in Plummett.
Okay.
You have the advantage of this. I mean, I could go to my...
Okay, it's just in the zoning ordinance. I can let you pass around.
I think we have them. We just... We were all going through our handout looking for that.
Sorry, no, no, no. It's in the zoning ordinance. Oh, see? John Kelly, Bill Quill, have theirs.
I'm going to continue. So you said you think it's covered in an existing zone.
It's in there. It's in 1204.1 that if anyone's aggrieved of any decision of the staff person, they can go to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. In addition, if someone is... Doesn't like the way someone is performing, they can go to the Board of Selectmen because the Board of Selectmen hires the staff. So we don't have term limits on any employee. You go to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, Maryam, that's good. Because I was... You just said one thing. This is a... I think part of the confusion and part of the uneasiness was that there was... One of our existing employees was always cast into this role. It was unfair to that employee because of some of the suspicions that get thrown out by citizens. But it's... This person is subject to performance appraisal on at least an annual basis, and the same due process that the public has when they felt like they've been dealt unfairly with any public employee would be available with that citizen, and the protections also of the employee. So I'm okay going with this. Your board is going to appoint it, and they're going to own it. So, and I trust that the Board of Selectmen will be good stewards of that charge. Further discussion?
Just may I add one thing, Mr. Chandler? There is a... An employee personnel manual that people who look for the paperwork here... It covers all of those points, and it goes as far as dress code. We don't need to get into that here. But there's mechanism in place for controlling of employees.
Even though they're not specifically referenced?
Correct, sir.
Thank you.
That's policy of the town.
Thank you. Further discussion? Public hearing? I'm sorry, I'm not on public hearing yet. I'm sorry. I'll let it get away. But it turns out within the public hearing, the board can ask questions. Further public comment? Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, Patrice Scott. I would just like to support the concept of the building code and thank you all for your hard work on it, and Brian in particular, and Maryam for bringing it forward. I know maybe people may be listening at home, and I'm not one normally that supports a lot of regulation, but I think this building inspection is something that has been long overdue in Plummett, and has... We have seen a lot of problems at the select board coming forward of people who are in houses that have not been built properly and really can't do anything about it because we haven't had this inspection and permits in the past. So I think it's something that I'm hoping people will support at a town meeting, and is something that will help keep our buildings in our town safe and prevent any kind of catastrophe that could have been possible in the past, and luckily, we haven't had anything too bad occur. But we do have a lot of old buildings in town, and with new buildings, no meaningful way to inspect right now. So I definitely support this and hope everybody will...
Thank you. Cheers. Further public comment?
Frank Miller again. I had offered my comments, only that the fact that this is a very personally sensitive issue to the citizens, and as a member of this committee trying to get this formulated into a warrant article, we have gotten the International Building Code at the libraries updated, and I would like to suggest or recommend that these citizens read the new codes because there's a lot in there that they would help them put their minds at ease about this building code regulation that they may have thought about a negative in the past. It's turned out...
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Further public comment or against? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:42. Thank you, those young eyes. Back to the board for discussion and a vote on this? Yes.
This... Mr. Chairman, this regulation that we're looking at here, this is not, in a sense, going to create a new position. I mean, it could be filled by an existing employee, or that they might write on that. That we're not...
You'd have to ask Mr. Kelly for that.
I just want to make sure we weren't creating a new position by passing...
Further discussion? Yes, Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I want to applaud the selectmen for looking at alternative ways, especially from a couple of years ago when they were just looking to impose new regulations or enforcement on just apartment houses and landlords. So I applaud them for looking at a different avenue to encompass everybody, not just picking out one segment of our community. I do have... I sat on the committee that looked at this over the past few months, and I applaud Brian and the other committee members did a super job. And from the beginning, I had some concerns. They were alleviated at points. But a couple over... Things that I've had from the beginning, some concerns. One of them is I would vote in favor of this in a heartbeat if I knew that it just stayed as long as Brian stayed part of the community and possibly might even have that. I'd vote for it in a heartbeat. I think Brian does a super job.
Absolutely.
I just think about the person that had his job before Brian, and I would go to every single... Every single house in the town of Plummett and say, we don't need this. That's how strongly I would have been against it then. But there are... There might be another way to handle this, and I think that if we put some minds together, there might be something else. I mean, during the working on this in the committee, we talked about two, possibly three projects that this code enforcement would have helped, a problem that happened because it wasn't in place. Three projects that were brought up. One is Blueberry Hill. It was a big project, and maybe there's a way for the town to say, look, if you want your building permits, come to us, sign this paperwork. The planning board has put together this plan where if you're over a certain size building project, or you meet some criteria, you have to sign off that you are going to pay a certain extra money to have some type of clerk of the works. And they would pay for it for just that project, and then it would act like a building inspector. And there's got to be some threshold. If I go into my house and I pull off some of the wall boards, that's considered rough work, roughing in. And I put a pipe in there or some electric... If I'm roughing in, I've got to go and get a building permit and go through the building code. If I hook something up to my electrical panel, that's also something that would kick in, a building code requirement, and I would have to go through that process. So there's a couple of things that still concern me with this, sitting in the committee. I do think that there are a lot of good aspects to it that would provide some protections for people that are having a house built, where a contractor would come in... This was explained very well by Brian and the committee members, that the contractor came in, didn't quite know what he was doing, and was screwing up. The person having him, paying him to do this work, might not catch it because they're not a builder, and the building inspector would come in and catch it before it's too late. So I understand, and I think there are some very, very good things with this, but I'm not sure if it outweighs the potentially issues that could bother the property ownership in Plummett, too. So I think we need to think about all those things before we just say, yeah, this is great. We've got to think about everything.
I'm going to take Bill first, John, and I'll get back to you. Go ahead, Bill.
I don't dispute what Mike is saying, that there may be some other alternatives. I think, though, that when you weigh in the balance, this alternative relative to those other alternative, this takes the fox out of the chicken house. If you had a contractor sign paperwork that they have some kind of an inspection process, they would be selecting the inspection person that would be doing that work, and the town would not have any real basis to provide oversight of whether that inspection was completed or that it was completed properly. And I think that in the worst-case scenario, if down the road, when Brian retires, somebody else comes in and abuses the position that they're appointed to in applying this administrative process to this code, again, the protections are there to take the condition, whatever it might be, and appeal it to its proper court, and/or, in the worst case, the town could act to rescind this administrative practice that it is adopting. So there are... There is protections out there that I think would weigh against abuse developing that could not be remediated. I think that the adoption, as they presented it to us, in my mind, is a very well-drafted document. I wasn't a part of it. I was a part of an earlier committee that I was appointed to by the select board that looked at the issue that you alluded to here as related to apartment units in the town. And I did not support that notional proposition that was brought before the committee at that time, and spoke very strongly in favor of doing something like this, adopting an administrative practice that enforces a state code at minimal cost to the town that could be offset by fees associated with the work to be done. And I think that Brian in particular is to be laudate for what he has constructed in response to that earlier work that had been done.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Kelly?
The only thing I can say is I think any of Mr. Ahearn's concerns act can be regulated by regulation, and we might be able to relax the idea of whether you changed an outlet or not, even though I believe that, since I do not like electricity and I do not like plumbing, I believe that there are a lot of mistakes made by the homeowner trying to do his own job. These are the two things of concern. And they are licensed for a particular reason, that they were licensed to be an electrician and so forth. But I think whatever his concerns act can be controlled by regulation. I don't think that... I think it could be plausible to that.
Thank you, John. Further discussion? I'm going to recognize Mr. Dragon for a second.
I have a few comments, Mr. Chairman. I did make some comments at the last meeting on the 12th year. Nothing's been addressed on that, and I think they were important, so maybe I'm the only one in the cage here. I don't know.
I have a quick answer for you, Mr. Dragon.
Pardon me?
I have a quick answer for you, if you'd like.
I'd like to finish my...
He hasn't given his question, General.
Thanks, Brian. I'd like to be able to... I have some concerns, as Mike said. I'm not opposed to having proper inspections, as a select gentleman pointed out. What I am concerned about is in this article, warrant article that is listed here, we have nothing for qualifications. Secondly, I assume that the person being appointed is... Will be the code officer or inspector for life unless they retire or to death do we part. And I do have concerns, as Mr. Ahearn brought up, that we may have someone that we think who's appointed would do an excellent job, but what about the next person? We do not have any safeguards in this article. We can say RSA, say this, they've got a separate document that says how you behave for an employee of the town. But to me, I find it ironic that we do have, for the planning board, appointments and reappointments by the select board for terms, but we have nothing here for the code inspector. And I think it's a very transparent position because it's a position of authority, and it's very important. And why not put this in here? Instead of saying, well, it's covered over here, it's covered here, that gets into politics and gets into a situation many people don't understand, all the rules and regulations. I'm one of them. But I would like to see that... And I don't see why there should be a problem. We have reappointments every two or three years, whether it's the same person or not. We do it for the planning board. I don't know why we're not doing it for this position, as pointed by the select board. To not have any qualifications listed for this, we may have a person who's qualified now, but what about the next person? It would seem to me it would have to be somebody that's very uridite in building codes and also electric, heating, plumbing. Are we saying that whatever's the most popular, or whatever the politics, or whatever the situation may be, and not make an accusation, just saying, all of a sudden, this person appears, he or she, and they're the code inspector? I just find it very hard, and if I was to vote on this today, I couldn't in good conscience as a taxpayer, not as a board member, really vote for this because I think it's incomplete. We say, let's have the applicant notify the code inspector 24 hours in advance, and the code inspector will respond in a reasonable time. Well, we all know what President Bill Clinton would say. What is the word? No, reasonable, what's the intent of it? So I question it. Is one week, two weeks? What if the person's ill? What if he's in the hospital? What if he's on vacation? Is everything delayed? I just see that this could be abusive, and in my experience, maybe I'm more sensitive to it because I've handled it for 38 years, dealing with code people, and it can be very abusive in a very difficult situation. So I think it should include qualifications. It should include term limits or some time for reappointment, and keep the transparency where it should be, and at least state after reasonable, but in no case not more than two or three working days for the inspector to make the inspections. I think we have to put some... Put the building inspector in a position so that... And I would think he would want it so that he will perform and be answerable to the town and not have any problems. So I think these are three areas that really should be included in this thing here. If the rest of the board members feel it's not important and it's covered here, there, everywhere, that's up to them. But I see no reason why we cannot include it in here and have it part of the warrant article with qualifications. I just... That just blows my mind that we just appoint someone for life and someone with no qualifications. Maybe, I don't know. Not to state that in the warrant is, I think, is ludicrous.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dragon.
Thank you.
Message loud and clear. Rhonda?
Yes, I agree with Mike Ahearn and Mr. Dragon totally in their concerns because they are mine, too. Because the way I look at it is there could be some legality here, and I'd like to know how the town is being affected by that. If we have somebody that's not... The code enforcement person comes in and they're supposed to be qualified, if something happens down the road, you know, what happens? You know, is that code enforcement person liable, or is it the whole town? And, you know, that sort of thing. So I think there's a lot of things that need to be looked at a little bit closer, with these people have mentioned, and qualifications, and with your terms, and, you know, that sort of thing.
Thank you, Rhonda. Further discussion? I'm going to go back around the table again, John. Have I talked to you yet? No, I haven't. Yes. We'll give Mike another shot here.
One other concern, and again, if this board says, yep, let's all recommend it, you know, that's fine, but make sure you're aware that if there's a problem and there's someone other than Brian in this position, it may not be as agreeable and as understanding. And they can... And they get real particular about something, right? The person that was in that job before Brian. To get someone like that in there, I don't believe he was forced out of the town. I believe he was here and was... His work was appreciated by some, and he stayed with the job until he went to Bristol and now in Washington, D.C. If you have a problem with it, it goes to the zoning board of adjustment. So if you're in the middle of working on something and it shuts down, and then you've got to wait for the next zoning board of adjustment meeting to hear your side of the story because you don't agree with what you're getting for an answer, that could hold you up for quite a while. So there's a lot of things there that we need to think about before we just say, yep, let's put this for a vote to the community and vote there and see if they want to vote for it.
Mr. Kelly?
I have a little bit different take on this. Number one, this is a brand-new regulation or a brand-new job, and you cannot cover all points in the beginning. I found out with zoning that zoning usually does not pass if you try to get too stringent a vote on zoning. You get zoning in, and as time goes on, you refine it a little bit more, and eventually you get a zoning that you want. But if you try to cover all points at the very beginning, you've seen it time and time and time again with towns, it does not pass, and it just keeps on going and going and going. As far as qualifications are concerned, I'm not too often sure as to whether a warrant article for a fire chief or any other warrant article can specify every known problem, every known incident that there is. You'd have a warrant article that would take 25 years to write, to read. So you've got to have a little electricity as far as that is concerned. As far as transparency is concerned, that's a brand-new word that's gone over the United States like wildfire. The person will be an employee of the town. All employees have to be either qualified or they have to be go-to-school to be qualified. You'll see whether it's EMS, whether it's firemen, whether it's policemen, or whoever it is, they continually go on a continuing education program that the town pays for so that even they... If they're not even qualified for the job when they're hired, they become qualified as they are on the job. So that should be taken care of. I think that as far as Brian is concerned, I believe that he is more than qualified. I think the next person... What you're seeing in a sense is that the selectmen are not knowledgeable enough to hire somebody that is as qualified as Brian is concerned. And I'm just afraid that this is going to just be like a person in quicksand. The more regulation, the more detailed, the more problems you try to inject into this warrant article, the longer it's going to take. And a lot of people are going to go along their little old ways and build buildings that they want and still have problems. That's why electricians are licensed. That's why plumbers are licensed. And I think we do this warrant, we vote on it, the people like it, they vote on it. They don't like it, they won't pass it. Then we can get into the real nitty-gritty details. And I don't think you can get all things for all times for all people in a warrant.
Thank you, John. I'll respond to that, please. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm going to let you speak. I just want to make sure, I'm going to let everybody have a chance, and then I'll go back, and you have a turn. Go ahead, Mr. Dragon.
Well, I understand what Mr. Kelly is saying. We're not asking to enumerate their qualification. But are we asking for someone who's qualified in the building trades and in the electrical and plumbing and knowledge of that, other than just somebody that this is a good candidate? This person said they would like to run for it. And by the way, I didn't know. No one has... I've heard through the grapevine, but I haven't heard if it's official or not, but everyone seems to say that Brian is the man. If he is, I think that's wonderful. But I don't know anything about it. And I didn't think anyone was appointed officially at this point until this article passes. And I can tell you, I had recertification meeting recently here for, in my business, for setting up in the manufacturing module homes. We had police, primarily fire marshals, people saying that these people who are licensed stated a number of things that they have found in violation with licensed people. So I'm not as confident as Mr. Kelly is, and I don't mean that as criticism, but license does not mean that you know what you're doing. And we on the job have found many instances where, you know, we know the code is being violated, but it's out of our hands. It's supposed to be with the town planner or the town code officer, whatever. But it does happen. I'm just saying that to say qualified with a brief statement, expand the word reasonable, meaning to respond within a certain time. Just don't stop at reasonable. That's, you know, being sick, illness, vacation, a number of things can happen, as Mike mentioned, as far as weather and things like that. There should be a response time there. I don't think that's making it too detailed so that people won't be considering this and to have some type of term limit. So we have accountability. We don't need it from Brian, but like Mr. Aitken said, maybe the next person, we may need that. And I think that protects the town. And I think it adds more confidence for the people and the voters of this town who are now going to have to comply with this should it pass in the town warrant. So I'm talking very little, Mr. Kelly, and I don't think it's unreasonable.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I've been undermissed. I'll recognize it, Brian. Brian is...
He had one answer earlier.
Here. Brian, you have the floor.
In response to what Mr. Dragon brought up about reasonable, under the adopted rules titled, what is that, 12, chapter 205D, which has specifically to do with my... 5023B, inspection should be conducted within five business days. There's no shall. In other words, it's wide open. There's no place else in the RSA where time is mentioned on any of this stuff other than the other rules. Okay? You know, you talked about qualifications and appointments. If this was passed, there's nothing to stop the board of selectmen from hiring somebody the day that it comes through town meeting. You know, I could be writing myself out of the job.
I bet you'd be given a chance to pass if they have that. It's got to be further in all the articles.
You know, as far as term limits, I think you'd have a hard time telling a position. I mean, there are no term limits for chief of police, for the chief of the fire department, for highway department. So the protections to the town people as an employee that is provided by oversight by the board of selectmen.
We have a point behind that.
Excuse me. I'd like all this to go through the chair rather than become a dialogue between a member and our...
Appointments to the planning board, I believe, are covered by RSA as I'm handling, Mr. Chairman.
We still do it. Yes, they are.
Okay. And those are...
And are executed by the board of selectmen.
Of the board of selectmen. Okay. As are hiring and firing of town people.
That's correct.
And that's it.
There's a process defined by the RSA of how that could take place relative to a planning board and probably a zoning board as well.
And if you're looking for, Mr. Chairman, a professional to fill the position, I can only think of one thing. If Marion was offered her job with a three-year term, I would pretty much doubt you have that taken.
Okay. No. Thank you, Brian. This, John.
Well, you know, I think that we've heard some really good comments here at the table that really all speak to probably a more widespread desire in the town for their issues to be acted upon. And it sounds to me that one of the issues is that we, as a town, need to hear from the select board that they are willing to actively supervise their employees, the town's employees, and are willing to reprimand or fire those people who aren't doing their jobs, which I think, as Mr. Kelly said earlier, is really in their purview, not this planning board's or a warrant article's purview to define when somebody should be fired. I think we've also heard some interesting concerns about this word appointment. And, you know, the way I read section 1102.1 is that it should be the duty of the board of selectmen to hire an administrative official, excuse me, officer. It happens to say appoint, and I'm sure that makes a lot more sense when we're talking about how do we reallocate with the limited resources we have, especially the resources of personnel, the duties that need to be conducted, especially if we add on this job. Appointment makes more sense to say, oh, this person who's already hired and already on salary can do this job without costing the town any money, whereas if it had said to hire, it sounds like it's a whole new position. Unfortunately, when we use the word appointment, then we start thinking about our own context. Well, we're appointed. We're not paid for our jobs. We're political in nature. And whereas we're real... This job is about civil servants, somebody who needs to do their job and be held accountable for their job. So I think that if we thought about, you know, civil servants, whether they be police officers or fire officers, you know, or this inspector, I mean, these are all positions that deal with the safety of the residents of Plymouth, that it makes sense to me for it to be a position that's long-term, hopefully encouraging you to be around for a while, and clearly under the supervision of not elected, not a political body like the planning board, but by the select board.
I think you've got... Actually, they're the other way. It's the other way around.
I missed the question. Okay. I was already, my head going to my last point. I'm sorry. And my last point is, it sounds to me like it'd be really good for the process, should this pass, that when somebody asks for a land use permit, they get a little sheet of paper that says, if you have any problems with, you know, the way inspection schedule works or with anything in the process, these are your rights, you know? You have the right to talk to the zoning board. You have the right to talk to the select board and make sure that your concerns are addressed so that somebody doesn't feel trapped and victimized by a bureaucracy that seems to be out of their control.
Yes, Bill. Then I'm going to weigh in at the end.
I think that Bob made a couple of very good points and notwithstanding what I said earlier, I think that those points could possibly be addressed in 1102.1. And I think after the word building inspector, there could be inserted a statement that this person will be generally experienced in the construction trades. They will have, or she will have so many years of experience to build upon in this position. Doesn't necessarily mean they have to be licensed in those trades.
No, that's true.
But that they be experienced in those trades and have a depth of experience. Now, this person in implementing the position, and correct me if I go astray, Brian, I would presume when an inspection of some particular facet of the construction is needed, that inspector is going to meet with the licensed person that's performing the work. The inspector is going to listen to the issue as addressed to by that licensed person. And if for any reason he's in doubt of what that licensed person is telling him, he would have the right within this regulation to bring in another licensed person to verify that the condition that he may have concern about is in fact one to be concerned about or in fact affirms the inspector's representation to him in the first place. I think that a brief statement along that line in that paragraph would address by and large one of the critical points you raised and I think that Mike had raised as well. So that's my comment as it relates to implementation.
Thank you, Bill. Rhonda, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. If Marion or Brian could enlighten us, it's my understanding from the conversation that we had when this issue came up before, is that we're talking very minimal inspections that we need here in town. So we're not talking about hiring some professional for, you know, to be concerned about that sort of thing. I think, it's my understanding from other states and towns, they pretty much use builders or experienced retired builders that have been in the trade for a long time. So I think that thing about having a retired person or experienced person, it's only a part-time. So is that my understanding? I mean, can we ever see Clement getting so developed constantly that we're going to need a full-time?
That's a planning board's job.
You know what I mean? I mean...
That's speculation.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Being that this is administration, that is, once again, under the purview of the board of selectmen, that they can be looked at as the executive wing of town government, where this board sits more in the legislative capacity, ZBA being judicial more or less. To that end, it was written in broad strokes. I envision the process as it comes down to the nuts and bolts of actually doing this in guidelines with the building codes, the part of the International Code Council, which pretty much sets out a lot of what you have to say, Mr. Dragon, as far as qualifications and things like that. Obviously, there's squishy language in here, the reasonable amount of time thing for one. Reasonable is reasonable. If we're all reasonable people, the vacation problem can be worked out. There's also a statement here about the building inspector or his designation. So in other words, depending on the scope of the project, if the inspector was out of the country for a week, there could be somebody who could step into his shoes, probably somebody with the fire department because most of the co-expectors built around fire, say, who am I saying? You know, if it came to structural things, maybe that would have to wait. You're at risk of that when you're dealing with any small family because we all learn many things. But what I'm trying to say is, in order to pin it down enough that you're not buying a pig in a pothead, as Chris brought up last year, but leave it open enough for these factors to all come in to play in the future. Like I said, it's more of a process than it is because, as it's been brought up at the table here, if it was all written down here and, you know, a year down the line, oops, we missed that one and it was a big one, you're hung until the next town meeting. So this way, if it's done at the administrative level, it can be changed within a week, you know? One board of selectmen's meeting and the emphasis or administration could change, just that quick.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I'm going to take one more. John, Kelly?
A couple of things. Number one, as far as qualifications are concerned, I'm not too often sure how many selectmen, when they get elected the first time, are qualified as what a lot of people wish that they were. Number two, contracts are not always the best investment. We found out that they can be the double or they can be for the good. So contracts are not the end of the conversation. The person that is going to be hired will be an employee of... The person that is going to be hired will be an employee of the town, and all this warrant is, in my estimation anyway, all this warrant does is to say, there will be a building inspector. We are not given job qualifications, we're not doing anything else. That is a job of the employee manual, and before a person is hired to do this, I assume there should be some section of that employee manual that says he will be qualified and he will know what he is doing. It should be a known fact that the selectmen of a town will do in all good and diligence of trying to hire the best people that we possibly can. And there are so many items that slip by, and Blueberry Hill's a good example of that, that slip by without somebody being on the job, that I think something has to be done. This is a very general warrant, and the details can be worked out, because he's going to be an employee and he's going to be controlled by the selectmen.
Thank you, John. I'm going to weigh in now, as a member of the board. Mike and Bob both reflect some of the concerns I have, and I do agree that there have been a couple of cases where our hands were tied, we found ourselves none of the right tools. And I have to say that Brian Murphy has done an extraordinarily good job. He stepped into a role that had another party into it that was not as well-received in the community as Brian. I get good feedback whenever I have to deal with clients that have dealt with Brian Murphy's. It's actually unfortunate that he has to be in this position where he becomes the referendum rather than the article. So it's too bad. I'll name drop a little bit. I had a meeting years and years ago with Governor Melvin Thompson, and he said to me, Fred, he said, the Hampshire begins at the hooks of tow booth. And I never forgot it. And I have to tell you that, I do have a concern that we're making a move towards more regulation, towards more invasiveness into our lives, and I have, I probably have a little bit of a libertarian streak somewhere down deep inside that I'm bothered by that. A year ago, we sent a similar package back to the selectmen, same, we didn't think it was ready, and in their wisdom, they didn't proceed with it, and this new product came through, and it's very good for what it is. But I do think Mr. Ahern had a good point, that there may be a threshold here where this is really an appropriate ordinance, but for the everyday Joe, it's invasive, and it's going to be a rub between the city hall and the little guy. We get the wrong guy in the job, it's going to be a nightmare. So I'm going to, I'm going to let the voters decide on this one. I'll take a position on it tonight, but I go with the village wisdom theory, that the village has greater wisdom than any one particular person, and we'll see what the village has to say about it. So unless there's some other further comment from the board, I'll look for a motion relative to this building inspector ordinance, relative to the board's support at town meeting. Mr. Hall?
Just, if I may, one comment. This is what I would describe as a framework regulation, and not a detailed job description. If the townspeople, even with the provision that I addressed a moment ago, reflected in this document, if the townspeople adopt this recommendation, the first thing that the governing board is going to have to do is have the town administrator draft a functional job description for the position that's going to be filled. And the town administrator, lacking qualifications on how to describe this position, is going to have to seek help from the municipal association to craft such a job description within the intent of this framework regulation. And I just want the board and the public to understand that. But I do feel that the caveat that Bob addressed and that Mike addressed have validity and could be, at least in a framework sense, described in 1102-1.
Further discussion? Yes, yes.
I was just looking up 1102-1, and it has all to do with land use permits. Am I right?
In the existing zoning ordinance.
Right, right. So I don't really understand why the references to 1102-1.
You'd have to ask a colleague.
This is the way the regulation, the adoption is being presented. This is 1102.1, appointment.
That's the proposed 1102.
This is the proposal that's going to hold at the town meeting.
The word proposal hasn't been used, I do not believe. I believe it's 110201, and that has only to do with land permits by the zoning.
I think there's a confusion in which document we're looking at. Mr. Hall is looking at the proposed, so the building inspector, and a clause in there is 1102-1, and there may be another clause, I'm sure there is. For clarification, Mr. Hall is referring to this language called appointment here.
Right. What I'm saying is that that should have been...
Yeah, it should have been clarified. Yeah, yeah, okay. Now, I'm still looking for a motion on the proposed...
I make a motion that the proposal of the building inspector be at least approved by the planning board. Is that what you want?
I sent to the Select Board.
Excuse me?
I would offer, John...
We have John, why do you want to be a suggestion?
I would offer, we don't address a building inspector per se.
The warrant.
A warrant article 11 titled Administration and Enforcement, that we recommend to the town meeting its adoption as an administrative vehicle to apply or to enforce the state building code.
And you're suggesting, John, just made that statement?
I'll accept, I'll accept my spokesman.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded that the board showed its support for the adoption at town meeting of Article 11, Administration Enforcement.
As written.
As, as it stands, we...
No amendments.
It was not amended. It's as, it's in front of you.
That's a basic motion. Now it's appropriate to make an amendment to that motion if we wish to make one.
Mr. Ahern?
Is it possible to make an amendment to this? And I know it would throw the whole thing off, and I won't offer it if there doesn't seem to be much interest, but some sort of threshold to this?
I think without some thoughtful structure, if we get, we're going to be, we could go down a major rattle here today doing this. So it's a, you could, I don't know...
I could be in favor of some sort of threshold.
Well, I mean, I agree too. And, I mean, we haven't voted yet, and I mean, two black guys are indicating probably how you were doing about that. I don't know, how would you see the process going, Mr. Hall, if we were going to amend this tonight? We're going to get into a half a dozen amendments if we open that up.
If we would amend this tonight, we would have to have another hearing on the amended version that, where we're moving to approve tonight. We basically defer the formal adoption until after another public hearing is heard.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, John.
Could we, if this passes, could we take some of your concerns and do it administratively?
And do it...
If our qualifications and so forth are concerned? And, or even maybe administratively make a threshold of that?
Well, some of the concerns, especially those by Mr. Ahern, are, I think, are more substantive. They would segment the application of this based on size of activity. Do I hear you right, Mr. Ahern? Yeah, so I don't think you could do it really cleanly administratively, but I think you'd end up coming back here and we have to go right through a process again to change it.
It almost seems like the threshold could be a project that ends up starting in the planning board, that needs approval at this stage. We could almost implement it here without even needing a building code, the adoption of the building code.
I'm sure we could, make it discriminatory, and we make it sooner than that.
Very similar to how we require the applicant to hire our engineer to make sure that they're doing everything the way the plans say they are.
I don't want to get into the detailed process of hammering on amendments to this tonight. It's, I think, we could easily go several hours on that. We have a, we have an applicant coming in for conceptual review, and I think we should let this stand on its own tonight. And I have a motion, and what, where were you, with you, Bill? You had a motion?
I had a motion to adopt it as we have it in front of us, and to the point that was raised here, whether this could be handled administratively by the governing board, it can and should in drafting of a functional job description, which it'll have to adopt...
That's relative to the, to the individual, but it doesn't address...
Relative to the threshold, now you're starting to tweak the state building code. You're taking exceptions to the building code, and I think that's a very, very slippery slope to get on. And again, I think that this adoption, in the way it's been proposed to us, supported by an appropriate job description, can very clearly delineate even within that document the threshold level that triggers some kind of an action or inaction.
Okay. So how do we do that? Well, we're not doing anything with that. He's saying that the Select Board does have the ability to do what John is speculating on, but we have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, and I'm ready to move it to a vote. So I'm going to ask for a vote, up or down on the board's support of the Article 11, Administrative Enforcement article. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Could you show your hands, please? We have four ayes. Those opposed?
Nay.
We have three nays. Let the record show that four members voted in favor and three in opposition, and that's how it will be presented at town meeting. Okay, that's the end of our cycle of the warrant article hearing, and we're going to move on to other new business, and I'm going to ask the very patient people from the Star King Unitarian Universal Fellowship Church and their representative to tell us what they have in mind. So I think I'm going to ask first, come on up, our protocol is we let our planner give the overview, her briefing, she has a briefing paper that she charges the board with. Mary, you're at the floor.
Yeah, I put one at everyone's desk. This is conceptual, but I did put a staff report for it, and Quentin Blaine is here around. Okay, are you just a member of the church?
I did the survey, boy.
Okay, the survey. And so what we have before us is Star King Unitarian Universal Fellowship, existing building on Fairgrounds Road, and they'd like to propose an addition. The addition is 2,000 square feet.
An addition is this crosshatch area here.
Yep, crosshatch. And we've got, and this is nice, it has a lot of detail for just the conceptual. They will be doing their formal presentation next week, which is for site plan approval, but we did want to get feedback from the planning board. What we've got here is our elevations, and the addition is shown this way. So it's, I'm sorry, it's 2,000 square feet footprint, but it's two stories, just like the existing building. On the front, it looks like one story, and then slopes down, and you've got two stories over here. So you can see what all the different elevations look like. I've got three copies, so everyone can take their copies. The town engineer and myself, we went out there today to look and see if there's any engineering issues, and for the building itself, it doesn't look like there's any engineering issues. What the town engineer was a little bit concerned about is if you see this part here, okay, over here, that's a depression, there's a hole there, and the way that the swale goes right now, the water goes into that area, okay? The crosshatch indicates that that's where they'd like to put future parking. He said at the time that they want to propose that future parking, he wants drainage calculations shown in that, because he's concerned about how this water's going to go. Right now, it goes into that depression, if that depression's not there, because of the parking, and they grade it...
It wouldn't be an impervious surface as well?
No, they're not talking about paving it. Okay, and their existing parking's not paved. So that would take care of some of it, but the engineer was looking at maybe continuing the swale, and we don't want to impact Plymouth Partners here, so we want to make sure that we don't impact the butters with the water, that the water is at least looked at.
My recollection is this quite elevation change between the parking and the entrance to the church, 340 feet maybe? I don't know what the...
Right, right. You can see that with the elevation here, it's a 562, and it goes down to 540, so there's a lot of different elevations. The other thing, let me see where I can find my report.
The current parking is generally pretty full up, so I'm glad to see that the parking is being expanded, because I go by there, and it looks like there is not another room for another car in the existing parking lot.
Yeah, they've got parking up here. I did talk to Quentin Blaine today, I've talked to the engineer, and what we were thinking of is that they're not looking at doing, it says proposed future parking, they're not looking at doing the parking right away. They wanted to be addition first, which as I said, the engineer said that he didn't have any need for engineering review of that, and then see how their situation is after they finish the addition, if they would be able to put in the parking.
So it's kind of like, let's build it and see if they come?
Let's see if they can afford the parking.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, see if we have any money left.
Okay, so what I was talking about is that maybe we could look at putting a condition that, yes, if they're going to go forward with the parking prior to clearing or construction at that time, run the drainage calculation numbers, and at that time, set up the engineering escrow. But there's of course no need to do that at this point, if they're not even going to do the parking. However, there's one thing I just realized, when I was looking at this part here, it says 32 parking spaces are required, and I'm assuming that's based on the new addition to, including that.
The new addition of the 191, correct.
And then it says 37 existing spaces exist.
Right, we already have 37.
Okay, but I counted, I couldn't count 37, I counted like 22, so...
Did it count across the street?
Oh, no.
And that's...
Okay, okay.
Just to clarify, to clarify what I just said, this, this part here is a non-buildable lot that was, that's attached to this, and it's just...
Okay, then clarify, if, with the addition, all they're required to have is 32 spaces, they're providing 37, then the other ones, you know, it doesn't have to meet the same kind of requirement, because it's beyond what we require. It just was not clear to me before, and then when I counted, and I, but I didn't count across the street. And I did view it, and there are cars parking there, I mean, it's fine for parking. It's like, there's, okay, there's this little sewer pump station, and it looks like a little house.
We're at the bottom of Morgan Drive, John, from up Fairgrounds Road down into...
Okay, okay.
Circle has three cars.
Okay, so we're here.
Yeah, you go down Morgan Drive, and you can see, no, no, Fairgrounds over here. And this has been cleared for parking, and their existing parking lot has been cleared from the snow too, so there's, it's parking, but that changes it a little bit too.
Just a question, I'm not familiar with the topography of this particular parcel, and the topo lines are not shown, but is there any additional parking that can be created here by re-layout of this area?
There may be, we can...
We keep looking at the amount of parking, and this is just very flat.
That's flat, yes, very flat there.
Because if it is flat, what you've laid out is not the most effective way of utilizing that for parking by any structure.
Right, and of course, it's not a paved surface, so there's no drawn parking line, so people don't know to park just like that. So we'd probably use it a little bit more efficiently than what is stated here.
No, there are a couple of houses as you go around that circle over towards Mr. Keller, I think.
Correct.
Over here.
There's one here? I think there's a total of three. Three separate lots.
And another thing, I don't know the policy of Plymouth, because I'm used to people requiring pavement, but it seems like in the past, you know, Plymouth hasn't required pavement.
We'll take impervious over non-impervious any day.
Okay.
We like gravel.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. The difficulty comes with, there's a way to delineate the parking spaces, because when I was out there, you know, the cars were parking more this way.
Yeah.
And not that way. I don't know if that's something that can be done.
Well, they could do it. They could do it with, you know, concrete, whatever you call those things.
Comber rails.
Right, comber rails.
Okay. And/or, you know, if they know it's a big event, then at that point, they could have an usher that's directing people to parking spaces. Oh, you do that?
Well, we have done that for some.
You know, just for the, I mean, the main concern about parking is that when you have those big events, you don't want people parking in the roads, on Fairgrounds roads, but that's the end of my comments, so. Quentin's here to answer any questions.
Quentin, tell us your story.
Sure. Even though the championship football game started, I have no interest in watching, because I have a, I've got a reputation that I adjourn meetings to watch World Series games.
Well, this wouldn't be the World Series.
This is the championship.
Some are wondering, some are wondering if it's a championship actually with the DC guys, but that's a whole other question that we should not raise.
Yeah, we can discuss that a little bit right there.
Okay.
Since they did beat Oklahoma, if Oklahoma wins.
Go ahead, Quentin, please.
I'm the chair of the building committee for the Star King Unitary Fellowship, and Tom Hahn is a volunteer member, surveyed it, has had many other roles as well. And we're here tonight just to hear concerns, because we're part of an organization. It's not like I'm gonna say, yes, I'm moving my, I'm trying to develop this property myself. And so, we have an architect involved, Stu Wright, who's the architect for this building here. He's built a number of LEEDs certified buildings. We have Trumbull Nelson as our construction manager. They've done a number of very environmentally sound buildings. I'm glad to hear you say we prefer the impervious surface over, I mean, the gravel, the pervious surface over the impervious surface, because when I mentioned that.
There's certain times when we think it's better, but.
And this type of use is already.
In this neighborhood as well.
Because our architect said, oh, that would really, you know, be inconsistent with a green design for this property. It's basically, it's actually well-drained, it's mostly sand. You could, you could hold beach parties out here if you dig a hole. This is an incredible amount of sand.
Yeah, it's big, yes.
Yeah, we don't find any, we built this one, only rocks to pick out, but we're just trying to expand it. We're gonna add on the second floor, we're going to add, expand the fellowship hall is right here. We're gonna put a kitchen here, we're gonna put a little smaller conference room here, a couple of toilet rooms here. And those are, and then on the downstairs, we're gonna expand it, so we're looking downstairs, there'll be classrooms, including some of our religious education classrooms, this space will be larger, switching our administrative around and have some storage at this end, because the steepness of the lot is really from along the side of the building. This is relatively flat out back. It does drop down five feet total overall, but much of this is very flat. It's steep right here in the front, so that's why the building does look, we have one story in the front, but, so it has some storage under here, because this is not much daylight. But I just, I am here to hear concerns. If there are concerns, we can take them back and try to address them if there are tonight or questions.
Yeah, we're, yeah, if you have any questions, Quentin, just, who we have, where's one? The planner, have you reviewed this?
Oh, yeah, it's right here. She's.
A very exhaustive study on it.
Yeah, now that I have my report in me, one thing I looked at was exterior lighting, because I know we like things dark sky.
What?
Exterior lighting, the parking lot lights, the lights on the outside. I talked to Quentin, I called him a couple times, but, and he's perfectly willing to do a dark sky compliant, I mean, that's what they prefer.
Marion, Tom corrected me when I was telling you about, if you look at the second page, that's where it's located on the, all we're trying to do for any, a little hard looking at this upside down, because we're only looking for the little path, pathway down. A couple doors here, there we are.
And they're downwashers.
They're downwashers. So they actually do say dark sky compliant, and they'll be on the building and lighting that little path that we talked about. I'm sorry, I didn't point that out earlier.
So we talked about.
And the lighting you're talking about is like the surface lights that.
Yeah, the on the building.
It's on the building, but it'll be shining down.
Downcast onto the front?
Right. And I can show you, I can show you on the front, the whole purpose of it is that we expect to have, there's an entrance down here, so we want to have a pathway that comes, where am I? Oh, I'm sorry. It's an entrance down here, so we're gonna have a pathway that would come over to the existing stairs that go down. And we just wanted to have a little bit of lighting, I think there's one, two, three, and they show on the page two and three, and they're just attached to the building with the dark sky compliant.
Now, you formerly owned the Yankee Fitness Center, which you have since sold, and I think you did a lot of late adjustment.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's right here.
That's that notch I'm looking at?
Right, and that's what Yankee Fitness was right there, or is, that building still there?
Leaving them the minimum setback.
Correct.
So the exterior lighting, we looked at, that looks fine. Drainage report waiver, again, that's what we were talking about with, you know, this little spot, that it only comes into play if they decide to go on with the expanding their parking, which they're not required to do. So as long as they meet their minimum requirement. And, okay, oh, and then we also talked about solid waste disposal in terms of having a dumpster, but they don't have a dumpster now, and they don't have a plan if they have a dumpster, so we don't have to go into issues of screening.
John, Mr. Keller, you had a question?
Yeah, I shot off track, but I would like to ask what the cost of this is, and you don't have to answer me, because we just got a library that's gonna cost 1.8 million dollars. I hope that we can look this into the cost.
Well, we have had a vote of the fellowship, and we've also had a capital campaign, and we are restricted to $800,000 by the vote of the fellowship.
Maybe the library can do that.
Well, we started out with Plan A, and thinking that that would come in 800 to 900 to a million at the tops, and when we got some further numbers, it looked more like 1.5 or 6. And we're a democratic organization, really, we actually, we have a, we vote on this ourselves, we'll raise the money ourselves, we expect some mortgage financing through either some banks and/or the Unitarian Universalist Association, as we've had before. So we're restricted to $800,000, and we don't know what the bids are. We expect, one of the reasons I'm here to listen to your many questions is that we'd like to get, the process we would like, if we get approval next week, is that we'll have our construction documents done very shortly thereafter, and we hope to go off the bid early today. And we hope that that's a good time for people to be bidding, and we hope to bring some construction here. But it's an unknown at this time, and right now, some of the details we're dealing with on.
Well, your problem is you've got a magnificent structure to work with that would, can't compromise, but I've been through the building, I think it's a very interesting building. And I was talking to one of your, a member of your congregation, and she indicated that the architect was extremely sensitive to the existing structure, and that they really flow wells together. Your neighbor down the street, because this is becoming Rat Fairgrounds Road, the church road, is, they've got the, the Methodist vertical construction is just under $500,000. And you should take a walk through it, they got a lot for their money down there. They, you know, the landcoast isn't in there, but I had a tour of the building, I was extremely impressed with what they did, and they listened to us on the drainage. So anyway, I mean, I, any other comments, any concerns, anybody seen any deal stoppers here? Then we take a vote on the motion of sending them off with our encouragement.
Now, is there's a contextual one?
There's just a, yes.
That's actually a little bit. We are not supposed to go into too much detail anyway.
Right, right, right.
We don't need an action.
And we've got this side plan that will be coming next week, and this, these folders that you have in front of you is your packet.
That you're taking home.
So take that on that's toward the January 15 meeting.
Well, look forward to you coming back. We're interested in seeing how this unfolds. Hope you bring it in under your budget?
Yes, well, yeah.
You'll leave whatever copies Marion needs, and she'll tell you.
And actually, I appreciate Marion taking the time to bring the engineer out there and to do the work and some things.
Thank you, Bill. Hang on to these.
Actually, they're the ones we filed.
Big button?
They're the ones that we had filed, so.
Yeah, you can give them to me.
All right. Thank you. Now we move to other business, if there's any other business, I'd be delighted to listen to it. Okay, I don't see any other business. Public comment?
I'd like to franken one comment that I heard of confusion, that this section 1102 on the building code was to replace the existing 1102 in the zoning ordinance, it was to replace the whole thing, that way we didn't have to come with a new set of numbers, and it wouldn't be any confusion on the zoning ordinance.
Supersede it.
Supersede it.
Thank you, Frank. All right. We're through with our agenda, except number nine.
I'm taking the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Ehren, seconded by Mr. Keller. Meeting adjourned, and may the best team win. Welcome home. Where are you on? You think it's over already?